I heard you go.
Oh, it's just.
Don't Jason though.
Are you always sat down?
Yes.
I heard you go.
Oh, it's just. Don't Jason though.
Are you always sat down?
Yes.
Okay, please stand for the.
All right.
Oh my, I.
Let's simplify. The United States of America. And to the public who stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, girl call Jeffy, Goodman, Aaron.
Here.
Schmidt.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
All right, call the order at seven P M this fine evening. Our open meeting. Um, act is over on the south wall. Um, we can also find it online. Review and action of agenda, did everyone get a chance to look at the agenda?
I moved to accept the September twelfth proposed agenda.
Second. Andrew remove Tierney second that we accept the September twelfth proposed agenda, any any discussion? Tierney?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, review and action of prior meeting minutes from August twenty second to twenty twenty three.
Move to second action on prior meeting minutes for August twenty second to twenty three and wait for reading.
Okay. Tierney move Andrea second that we accept the prior meeting minutes of August twenty second twenty twenty three and wait for reading any discussion. Sam, how do you go?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Motion carry, thank you very much. All right, review and action of prior public. Hearing meeting minutes August thirtieth twenty twenty three.
I moved to accept the August thirtieth twenty twenty three meeting minutes and wait for reading.
Sorry.
Andrew moved and Sam second that we accept the fire. Public hearing meetings of August thirtieth twenty twenty three and wait for reading any discussion. Andrew, how do you go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Motion carry. All right, oh my goodness.
I was actually trying to remember what we committed that for that.
We've been so many times.
I know, I feel like it was forever. All right, review and action of prior public hearing meeting minutes September sixth twenty, do we can extricate for all these extraneous? September sixth twenty twenty three.
I'm. Move steps action on prior public hearing meeting minutes for September sixth twenty twenty three and wait for reading. I'll second.
Fairly moved and Andrea second that we accept the prior public hearing meeting minutes of September sixth twenty twenty three and wait for reading any discussion. Andrew, how do you go?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carry, very good, communications.
Okay, um, we'll start with a few projects here. Um. Sounds like they'll be finished pouring concrete uh this week. Um, and then I should possibly be able to start pulling in line. Um. Spent some time with him today. Still still sticking to the September thirtieth deadline, so we're we're good in that aspect. We do have a few things left on the checklist. Uh, the preliminary checklist for level for Robert. Um. Tom and I'll do another walkthrough here again before the end of the month and do a final checklist. Um, he was able to complete quite a few of the things that we had addressed. Had addressed the first time, um. Very pleased with the work that was done in front of the senior center to correct. Uh, those gutter drains and getting them smoothed out. Um, as well as in front of Penny and the bank. Um, they worked on the alley. Were behind, sorry, to the east of. The library, so I'll be able to inform them if they can start uh. Whatever they want to do for a base for their shed. Um. Sewer and water. Uh, we are in process of acquiring R F Ps for SCADA system update. Um. Those will be open on the twenty. Second, right, that's what I said yesterday. Twenty second, um, at four P M. Uh, but will not be approved until the first meeting in October during our next fiscal year. Um, as but as that was budgeted, um, then we'll talk about a few. Few meetings, um, library will be uh tomorrow. Uh, in five fifteen. Um, at the library. Uh, I will be out of the office from the twentieth or on the twentieth, twenty first and twenty second. Um, I was asked to speak at a leadership forum. Um, so. Excited about that. Um, I'll be giving my speech on public speaking. That's one of the things you should not do when someone speaks. Silence yourself. Um. So I'm excited about that, that opportunity. So. Then that would take us to our next uh city council meeting on the twenty sixth. Um, and then I I do have another meeting that I want to plug in there. Uh, October sixth, the park and rec will meet. Um, at six fifteen P M. And we moved the tree board meeting. From the nineteenth, they usually meet the third Tuesdays uh due to. Uh, we've already had a few of them contacting me, so we 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 moved it to the twenty seventh, September twenty seventh. The Wednesday at four P M. Uh, we did receive our our pre-tree grant, this they 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 don't know them from any two minutes, so you. You're you're privy to the person in this case. Um, we received eight trees this year, so we'll be discussing the plan for where and when to plant those trees. Along with some education pieces that were that are part of that annual grant. They're free trees. This year we got eight, in the past we've gotten ten. So.
Nice.
Yep.
Do they pick the trees or do we?
The the Nebraska Forest Service, our our arena picks the trees, um. We we. We get, they they give us a general guideline of what they think they might be. Thankfully this year there's no fruit or nut bearing trees. Uh, so they're. Those are projectiles and not not welcome in my opinion, but uh. Uh, so we'll we'll be picking the best places for those trees to go, the tree board will. Um, at their meeting on the twenty seventh and then action plan. When to to do that, so stay tuned, mate, so.
Very soon, thank you very much. Andrew, do you have anything for us?
No.
Everyone's not here, Tierney?
No.
Sam?
No. Semi-carrying med at five fifteen today. Um. We talked a little bit about the. Uh, plan going forward into winter. Um, and then discussed. Uh, the update to their budget as you guys approved. Um, they wanted to express their thanks for giving them seventy five hundred dollars out of the general tax, so appreciate that. Um, other than that, we just carried business and approved those in place.
Perfect, thank you very much. Air one, yes, the enforcement sheriff and watering points.
And the sheriff's report was just came since the day right, Jesse, so it should have been a conditional on that.
I. I need a three right now.
Oh, I didn't make copies, I'm sorry. You have it right here?
That's okay.
Please.
I misunderstood what you were thinking.
It's all good.
Give you a, oh, take a minute to.
We're gonna take a look at that, we don't want to carry it over to the next one.
How did our water end up for the United, are are we okay still? Shouldn't maybe they just been down, right? As far as.
Oh, yeah, we're.
It's something like August, there was quite a film like it it was uh the one, it's three months ago anyway.
Yeah, I'm gonna need you this month.
Nothing like last year.
No.
No, I don't think Jesse could come speak to this more, she's been here longer, but I think we've ever hit our energy a lot.
No, not that since I've been here and they started that, I think. Shortly before I started the year. You know, there was some stuff with the water at that time, so.
As a as a part of there, just to speak a little more on that water, why do we do the sheriff's report there, um? Part of the. Duties monthly that. The the water operator has with your ass and to read a well, and then when they read the wells, they're also supposed to measure that. Okay, so we we have never, we haven't, we haven't been close at all this year, last year we were, we were dangerously close to having to put water restrictions back in place. Um, which we can do. Depending upon where the where the well is reading, what well we're we're reading off of, uh. And what well is in the lead for that month, so on and so forth. We didn't hit it last year, I can't imagine we'll hit it anytime.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I mean, we only got six inches of measurable rainfall in the irrigation season last year. Uh, we're we're gonna be. Within our average this year. Gonna use it a little sooner in August.
Yeah. For that. Right? Want to note that um we all received the imports. Financials, Jesse?
They're in process.
All right. Forgot to do my spill at the beginning of the meeting. Ready to go ahead and do it now that I remember it?
Is that probably one of them?
Uh, oh, oh, that we're videotaping and. All right.
They're all watching.
Oh, yeah, 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 all right, thank you very much, I did remember the open um meetings act, so. So that that one is the most important one of them all. Um, and then uh. We intend to take up the items on the agenda as they're presented, but we can we can move them around, also if we want to have a closed session. We can, even though it might not be on the agenda. And lastly, anyone speaking during public comment is limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals. And you would come up to put. Okay, I'll, I'll hold that forever now that I remembered. And do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
Well, you you know, you get your own special time.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you're special. Yeah, you're you're like, you're like.
More, now you get more than ten and a half minutes.
That's right, you do. All right, there'll be no public comment? Can you go ahead and and join us up the podium, introduce yourself and?
Hi, y'all, I'm Ken Comacher. I took some pictures, that was in one of my steel little foxes. That was in front of it. Here's another picture of what I pulled out of there. We're dealing with this on a weekly basis.
Did it really say that on it out there?
Yes, it did. And as you can see, it still don't do any good.
No, okay.
That's it.
I guess I've never made.
But, you know.
That's because you're not a, you know.
We're sp- we're spending, your guys are spending three to four hours. Picking up after the entitled people that are this city. That think it's God given right to throw whatever they want wherever they want. And, you know, it's my half dollar paid for those guys down there. To clean up. One of these days, some people are gonna want you to wipe their butt for them too, I can think of that. So, we need to get this under control at some point. Now. This continues, I'm gonna have to start charging for that battle well. Cause I can't afford the time.
Right now, you do it, you do it. You get paid because you recycle what's in it.
Well, yeah. And you can get right even, even, admitting heading forward, but. That's all right, I'm taking care of your others, so. Uh, to the end of the year, at least, I'm gonna do it for nothing. After the first of the year, we'll see.
Yeah.
If it continues to be like this. I'm gonna have to charge you.
Well, that that is, that is reasonable.
Absolutely.
And I don't, I don't know. Would spend the money and put the cameras up? And start finding people?
It would, yeah.
You know, they did that, they did that in that and make your profit.
Well, yeah, that's a good idea.
We need it, honey. You're gonna have to get good enough cameras that you can see who it is. You may have to. Put a page.
Resolutely, you know, all the legal stuff.
You might have to put a light, um. But it can be a.
Any sign, you're gonna be fined.
Yeah. But that light can be, can. Be a sunlight, be the one that you want that everybody like cash for.
Yeah, solar lights. Solar camera. On your own.
It is. It's getting way out of hand. You drive down there on a, any given night and fifty percent of the time, there's shit scattered all over down there. They gotta raise it this much. To throw their refrigerators and stuff. In the dumpster up here and they won't do it, they just push them out the back. You know. It's irritating for me and it's irritating for your health.
Yeah, for the guys, yeah. Well, and then.
They, you know, it's hard enough for them to try and keep up the way it is, they don't need to be. Spending three, four hours a week. Cleaning up after somebody when. When it's a free beach in people.
I was gonna say it's a service to them and then they.
You'd be surprised how many people I see from Ogoala driving in that landfill up there, with a little trailer load of stuff. That. We're provided for free down here. You know, they're getting nailed twenty five bucks a shot, they're a little better. Same down at Imperial, when I pull in down there to theirs. There's all kinds of people hauling stuff out there getting charged for it. So, you know, Perkins County, with four towns in Perkins County. They're doing their citizens a favor. By taking care of her.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you gotta jack garbage rates to pay for. Time spent, but. You know. You you put a two hundred dollar penalty on people that litter down there. And you nail three or four on my guarantees of the word get around. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
I I wouldn't matter, I go down, sit there, build them. I'm just a scientist. And.
And they and they have policies in place to.
Yeah, and they have policies in place and there are people that they. Wanna dump it on there. You know. I don't know. I heard that we made a deal with the county. That they could use. People in the county can use this dumpster out here. I've never seen that on the council meetings.
Yeah.
And I know that you've got a lot of people who are not fair using that. That ain't thing you're worried about.
Well, yeah. You gave us lots of ideas to help do with this, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's always nice to have solutions to the problem.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing solutions and showing us.
It's gonna take a good camera.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
And and I'll tell you, a lot of that stuff happens after nine o'clock at night, yeah.
Yeah.
So you put up a solar light. Motion sensor on there.
Mm-hmm.
So the people in the camera.
Yep.
I don't know, you probably have to put the camera in the inbound lot so somebody don't vandalize it. Even like that, I don't know.
It's also reasonable for us to comment that you were extra work and that's what you have to do, so that's. I mean, I appreciate what you've done, I mean, that's very kind of you, but also it's it's.
You know, I live in this town too.
Mm-hmm.
And and I don't believe that. The people that take care of this service that's given to them. Should have to pay for the people.
Right.
That don't.
True.
So you nail the people that don't.
Yeah, I like the fine idea better.
And feel like a matter of matter.
I don't know. You make it a fine, then it's gonna get to go through. County court. If you make it a penalty. I think the city can impose that on them. And if. Then if they don't pay it. Then you can take them to court on it.
You don't have to research them.
So you. You put it down as a penalty, it's not a fine.
If you post penalties in the paper, that would be really discouraging for most people. So I haven't named in the paper, but the.
Uh, I I'm not sure that. The people that are using the system can read. Now you're bringing my little intelligence, Ken? Yes, I am.
We can put it in pictures, do a picture board.
Yeah, it's my work. Well, my picture.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good for me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Good to know, definitely, did you make a list for us as we were talking?
Uh, I've got good notes here and I, we. If I may, you know, we have. We've experimented with a couple of different cameras, we just haven't found the one that's gonna be. We're gonna have to, like Ken said, we're gonna have to fork out. Some money to get a good camera.
Sure. Yeah, I think, a- and then we'll just work that into the fees.
So have you thought of any other solutions that were? Uh, mentioned. Yeah, I have.
Ed can sit down there, uh, yeah, twenty-four hours.
So other communities do have a. A a dump person, right?
Well, yeah.
Or like, yeah.
Like Madder as a guy. That they're not, their tree dump is only open. On certain rays. Um, I think. Elsie's the same way. But there's nobody really watching that blow up dumpster at any of.
Fence it in and then it's only.
And that would be.
It's only open from five to six on Mondays and Tuesdays or something.
That would be the other option is to. I mean, if you really wanted to go to the extremes would be to talk about fencing. And then controlled access either. Whether it's open hours to the public or. You know, or whether it's a. When he gets a car or you have to pay for a car to get access or something. There there are other options, I think the camera and the solar light are the cheapest. And and the the best starting options.
Yeah.
I I think before you go to the full extreme of fencing everything off or. Placing someone down there that that you start with the this option and then.
I think they got two people in Madder, Jill, were were got around. We're gonna put up the. People from out of town dump it. I don't know if what they've ever had a problem with people just throwing some stuff on the side.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in and spending your time to help us with the problem.
Well, you're helping me with a problem that you take care of.
It it'll take some time, we'll have to do probably a resolution and. Get find the cameras and. Um. Ed, if you can keep in in the loop. Uh, updates, please.
Sure. And any other solutions come to mind?
Yeah. If you see something out and about, an idea, yeah, shoot us email.
Well. I caught one guy from the angle of there dumping wood. Up there.
Hmm.
And I don't know why he didn't just put it into the Nigros dumpster.
Well. Lucy did a project here.
You know, and if you look, that one picture is a power to try and kind of my. Dumpster, uh. There's no need for wood up there.
No.
That's steel. And the other thing I will say, Ed, don't put any signs on the side of my dumpsters. Cause I do rotate them around, so the sign will disappear. I would be waiting. Well, they they did, you gotta sign on one. It's still gonna be good.
We know, they just run them over down there at the grass roll off, so, yeah. And that's the biggest. Of that, they still run it over.
Reminded me a lot of your help that was pushing it over when you was picking the chat.
I know who it was.
It was.
All right, and anything else for us?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, ordinance twenty-three oh eight oh one, Jesse, would you read that for us?
Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero one, an ordinance authorizing to be a brand Nebraska to enter into the municipal rental agreement. For the purpose of green and use of one twenty-three bipolar D two eight nine D three. Serial number six J X nine one six four eight four with bucket G P. Close eighty-four inch serial A. Four two three slash B C two zero zero six nine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can we, listen. Can we go to the not the third reading of this? We.
That that would be up to you guys, if you if you're comfortable with that, otherwise.
We tabled it the last time, so Tom could review the ordinance lease documents. What do you think, Tom?
Of the lease document, any?
They're saying. Lease agreements. Um, I did talk to the one guy though and asked. If I may need an ordinance, um, and he didn't, he just said. That's what they've done with other municipalities, so.
So are they gonna come get it if we don't pass it?
I don't. What?
If if we don't pass it, are they gonna come get it?
No.
Or we can use it?
I mean, as long as you sign the lease agreements, it's just more the. Ordinance portion of it, that was my question, like, why do you need this kind of ordinance form? And he said, well, that's just what we were, the like, be municipalities, and that's why it was in the package.
Is there any way we can rewrite the ordinance to make it like acceptable, like, you know, approval of the resolution, so, I mean. Is there a way we can rewrite this so we don't actually have to pass the ordinance?
Yes, and so I asked him too, I'm like, is a resolution okay instead of an ordinance, and he said that that was fine as well, so. I don't think that they really actually bear to have on this part. As long as they're not using.
No.
Oh. Okay, so.
It was my feeling from the.
Cool, let's make a resolution next year.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, that's my. As long as you guys are fine with it, then we will change it to a resolution in the next period or for the next meeting.
Yeah.
To pass this resolution, but I mean, I would make the recommendation that we sign other documents and then I can get that. That stuff back to them, um, cause I think that's more important for them to. To receive, but as far as this part of it.
I'd rather have it as a resolution.
Yeah.
Sure.
And they said that they didn't have a problem with it between that one.
Well, then we'll just.
So I mean, I would make a motion to have. To approve at least that, um. The lease document that are part of the ordinance.
Okay.
So that then we can see that part.
So we may have to contact them again to get the, uh. Uh, rental payment date changed, because the actual wording is in the ordinance. Um, to to authorize the treasurer to. Give you all the funds to pay for the rental payment. So that would be the only thing.
Are we getting?
So we approve the rental payment also with the contract?
Well, and it, in the bills and.
It is the bill.
Bottom, they gave you by the day, choose to do that.
That that was just sort of a question for the findings that. That change, because it does say that, um.
Yeah, cause we're not good for that in there, like, it's gonna be, it's part of the bills and claims, so we'll do.
The bills and claims and then the resolution won't have that.
Correct.
Okay, I got you, ten for, thank you. Okay.
I just need a a motion to approve the lease documents. So that I can sign them that are part of the ordinance.
And the city superintendent will sign.
Oh, the city superintendent, okay.
And that you would like it to be a resolution instead of an ordinance for the next.
And we can pay the bill, right? So it also could.
Answering the bills and claims, we don't talk about that at this, in this motion.
Okay. Make a motion for ordinance number, uh, to prove. Part of ordinance number twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh one. For signing of the lease agreement by the city superintendent. And for it to be rewritten uh as a resolution at the next meeting.
So it would just be that you your action would be that you make a motion. To move forward with the lease agreements. For section B of this unfinished business and that for the next thing we would request that. It be changed from an ordinance to a resolution to be passed at the next.
Yeah. Okay. Um.
Um, well, I make a motion except action on part B of unfinished business for us to sign the lease agreement.
Correct.
And for it to be a resolution at the next meeting.
Instead of an ordinance.
Instead of an ordinance.
That you table a portion of.
So I'll table a portion of the ordinance.
Part of section B regarding the ordinance.
Table of our, part of section B regarding the ordinance had rewritten as a resolution for the next meeting and approve the signing of a leasing agreement by the city superintendent.
Correct.
Sam.
Sam, move. Turn to Sam second that on action item B. We're gonna move forward with the lease documents that are in action item B. That we're going to table a portion of this action item and change it from an ordinance to a resolution. We're gonna table it to the next meeting. Any, any more discussion on this subject?
Thank you very much.
Yes. Turn to Andrew. Yes. Sam?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion, Carrie. All right. Very good. Resolution twenty-three oh nine oh one, resolution setting the property tax request.
Clear toward the back. You got all of the budget document from the auditors and the members and here some of that. So it doesn't maybe only allow to do a.
Perfect. Great.
The next resolution is about how the state, um, is set up. That's why it may have been most important than the bird.
Who the state requires information just like that. Okay. And we need a motion for me to sign this.
No, no.
Just because it's a resolution. Just making. And move case of resolution twenty-three oh nine oh one, resolution setting the property tax request.
Sorry.
Andrea move. Sam second that we accept the resolution twenty-three oh nine oh one, study the property tax request. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote? What?
I guess there's an error on this form. Like, there's notice it. I apologize.
Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
And I said, yeah.
Um, and we get this directly from the auditors, so can I pass the buck on to them?
Well, I missed it too and I read.
It should be twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, so I'll need you to amend your motion.
Okay, I amend my motion to accept resolution twenty-three oh nine oh one, the resolution setting the property tax request, changing one to twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four.
Sorry.
Andrea move. Sam second that we accept resolution twenty-three oh nine oh one, changing item number one to twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Any discussion?
Good catch.
Yeah. Yeah, because I read that and I know it, yeah. Made sense to me.
I, I just didn't, I don't second guess the auditor or something. That will copy and paste there, I guarantee it. But, all right, thank you.
All right, a discussion. Turn to Andrew.
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrea, please. All right, motion. Very good. Otherwise, it would have been on the agenda next week. Two weeks. All right, moving on to resolution twenty-three oh nine oh two, approving a one percent increase above the task. Above the base limitation in restricted funds.
That is what we already agreed on in the budget. It's not, it keeps it below the million coming out, correct?
This is allowing you to have that flexibility to transfer funds to different areas in the budget, basically. For the most part, so that, um, you're, you have them unrestricted if you need that.
No.
So it's page nine in here, the audit for the budget documents from the auditors.
Oh, it's the number three, on page nine.
Yeah. And then by doing that, we have the law, all the, um, the nursing authorities still left five thousand twenty dollars in the. Yeah.
Um, I'm expected that action on resolution number twenty-three dash nine dash oh two, approving a one percent increase above the base limitation on game restricted funds.
Sorry.
Here you move. Sam second that we approve resolution twenty-three oh nine oh two, a resolution approving a one percent increase above the base limitation of restricted funds. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you very much. Action and discussion on revolution twenty-three oh nine oh three, a resolution approving the annual appropriation bill.
It's approving the budget.
Which we've been working on since June. I always want to have like a party.
Make sure the dates are.
Yes, I, I would kind of be, you know.
No, that one I prepared. The dates are good on.
All right.
Maybe set action on resolution number twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh three, approving the annual appropriation bill.
Sorry.
Turn and move. Sam second that we accept resolution twenty-three oh nine oh three, a resolution approving the annual appropriation bill. Any discretion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you very much. Action and discussion on revolution twenty-three oh nine oh four, a resolution for signing the municipal annual certificate of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Works Classification and Standards.
This is the annual form for compliance in the county's standards, so.
And I realize most of the time I normally check the mayor box and put city of France in the municipality box. Just been having it to add and forgot that it was in there that way.
Until we went out of those words.
This is like Flower Rose, right?
No, this is for the classification of.
This is for the, yeah, the program compliance. So, and then it, then you're approving to have them, the mayor sign the other document that is showing what we are, all the little check marks that we're doing that for the system.
State of the working blind to see statutes, meets the plans, program, exchange, design, construction, maintenance for its highways, roads, and streets. Spending all tax revenue for highway, road, or street purposes in accordance with approved plans. Using the system of revenue and cost accounting with clearly includes a comparison of receipts and expenditures for approved budgets, plans. Using a system of budgeting which reflects uses and source of funds in terms of plan, programs, or standards. Counting system including an inventory of machinery, equipment, supplies. Counting system that checks equipment and operation costs, including its public records for information required in subsection two thirty-nine. State statute thirty-nine twenty-five twenty and included in the public record copy of certification of the resolution of government, this resolution by the mayor, so.
Authorize the signing of the resolution on this.
Jesse, that's, it's a lot of work for Jesse to send everything to, um, to make sure, you know, sending our financials and so on. Doing the proper accounting standards so we get the amazing money that they send us.
So this is just the weekend.
It's three thousand dollars for, uh, perfect. For, for, um, offsets Tom's cost by three, or, sorry, city engineer.
Well, and it's something which they used to do a different financial for, and this is what is replaced.
Okay. Okay.
Move to the action resolution, uh, number twenty-three dash oh nine oh four. Um, and authorize mayor to sign in the municipal annual certification of program compliance for the rest of work, also classified in any standards.
Okay. Sam move and Andrea second to accept resolution twenty-three oh nine oh four, authorizing the mayor to sign. Any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. All right, did anyone get a chance to look at bills and claims?
Yes.
Remove to accept bills and claims in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand nine seventy-five fifty. Andrea move. Turn to Sam second to accept bills and claims in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion? Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. We are adjourned at seven forty. Thank you.
Hold on.